All right, great. Let's get started. Well, welcome everyone to the monthly workshop meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township. We have everyone here except Commissioner Cobb. He did let us know that he was coming from an appointment, so we do expect him shortly. And thank you for, both of you, for coming live. Do we have any Zoomers? One online, okay. Thank you for joining us as well. We typically start a workshop with any items that our engineer has some sayings, so we'll do that. And then we'll pull the audience to see what your favorite topics are tonight. And let's do it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Just a couple of things on tonight's agenda. First, I'd like to talk about the Springfield Middle School. Recalling that they came through a couple of months back with a pretty large expansion to the gymnasium and some other entrance and parking improvements as part of a more significant land development plan. They've asked for another scope of work to take place in a little less formal perspective. This is some improvements to the grandstands, the discus throw, the high jump, and some access walkways to get from parking to the spectator areas. And they've asked for a waiver of land development for that project, measured against the larger project. It's really insignificant. We did have a couple of concerns. Stormwater management was one piece that we've worked with their engineer, Terraforma engineers, to get through and facilitate some stormwater management components along with the other work being contemplated. The one thing that we were talking about in conjunction with the larger school project is some buffering to those adjacent neighbors on Bergen. The Bergen neighbors' backyards back up to the fields and to some of the parking areas. So I did receive a landscaping plan from the engineer who is doing the larger project, T and M, and they have given me some landscaping material along that kind of sensitive and most critical area of that buffer. And so with those things in place and with the understanding that that buffer planting will come in conjunction with the larger project, I think I am ready to suggest that the waiver of land development would be appropriate for the improvements to the fields and to the sports complex. Any questions on that?
So when I was sitting with the planning.
Yes.
At that point in time, the school district had, did not appear to have made a decision regarding the ADA compliant improvements that were on the plan. So what I'm hearing you say tonight and in the book is that they have agreed to those ADA improvements.
Well, that is on the plea. ADA improvements are on the plan. Whether they actually fund and construct them, I guess, is another question for the school district as opposed to for this.
For me, they're at all of it to the big.
Okay.
I think Doug's hearing that.
What does that make, what does that mean for us?
Well, Pete, we're improving the site plan.
Right.
And so any component of that site plan is then available for the school to build. If they build the ADA compliant ramps and other improvements, I think it's really a school board decision at that point.
Sure, yes.
Yes, I don't think it means anything for us.
Yeah, okay. I was just, I was just highlighting it because there had been conversation in the planning meeting that indicated that they weren't, what you said, I guess, 100%.
Certain as whether, yeah, whether they could afford them, I think, is the question, yes.
Okay, so it's up to them, okay.
Correct. Great.
Tim, can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
So just to clarify, they're not required to make ADA compliant improvements?
I don't know, is the question. The plans certainly call for them. And I think there was probably some acknowledgement at the school board level that they needed to improve accessibility from the parking areas to the spectator areas. And so I'm sure there is some component of those improvements that are required. Whether all of the improvements that are shown on the plan are required by the ADA Act or not, I don't know.
But my understanding is if they don't build the new bleachers in between two fields, there's no requirement to do the ADA. If they do build the new bleachers, which they can be flipped around and they can, people can watch one, you know, one field, the other field, blah, 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 then they do have to do that. That's my understanding.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Because it's, because it's a new public, a new public gathering.
A substantial improvement, right, exactly.
Deal. But I mean, I, if we can write a letter encouraging them to, you know, put the ADA stuff in, I would be in favor of that.
Doug, do you have any more information on where the school board stands with that?
Oh, good. Oh, there you go.
You know, Doug, can you talk to the microphone because the people at home will hear you, or the one person that helped.
Well, in the recording, people may watch the recording.
Watch it later.
No worries. Thank you. I'm Doug Taylor with Dewey Engineering and representing the school district this evening. Terry DeGru couldn't be here, but I wanted to just give you an update. So the board, the recommendation to the board is to accept the alternates for the ADA accessibility, the bleacher area. And there's a couple, there's one other alternate for sod and a little grass seed so that we can establish the site quicker in the fall. So I put together, we did receive bids and we have a decent bid and we're going to make that recommendation that the board accept all of those alternates. And the indication is that they are going to go that direction, but we didn't have a formal board vote yet to, to confirm that. But that is the recommendation and that's the path that we're on.
That would make most sense to me, I think, but not the school.
Understood. Doug, maybe not a fair question for you because you don't control the, that schedule. But the landscaping portion of it, you know, if it's included on the plans for the much larger project, oftentimes the landscaping is one of the last things to get put in. Obviously, you're trying to expedite this approval process to get this work done so that the fields are available presumably for the spring traffic field season. How do we remedy, like, you know, now you're introducing some of these new athletic activities down closer to the homes and the landscaping may or may not be put in by the time you want to use the facilities.
Right. So the high jump is in the same vicinity that it is today. The timing of that landscaping, we can certainly, we're preparing the phasing drawings for the larger project now. So we could certainly ask for that to be installed in the first, you know, phase that it could feasibly be installed. So perhaps we could ask them to put that in in the spring of '25, you know, at least the buffer along the properties and then the remaining landscaping at the end of the job, because it won't be in any area of construction. That area is, it's its own area, so.
Possible because the bigger building additions that are in are, you know, a country mile away.
So we could ask for that, that specific landscaping to be installed in the spring of 2025.
Okay.
So the planning commission has already recommended the waiver to the formal land development process, and that's what's before us for Wednesday, correct?
Yeah.
Great, good. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So they'll make a decision on the final motion on Wednesday. You don't have to stick around for this.
Unless you like it.
We have a recycling report coming up on that tab number.
One more question.
I'm sure.
I was thinking about the, just as addressed, parking issues, other parking venues have been discussed and just an opportunity to just talk about parking.
Yeah, well, I guess, Suze, in conjunction with the larger project, one of the things that it hopes to accomplish is to provide safer pickup, drop off, and access to the building. And so in conjunction with the gymnasium expansion and the other work taking place a country mile away, there are significant traffic circulation improvements and parking spaces and landscaping and striping and concrete islands that come in conjunction with that bigger project.
But I think you were talking about Bergen Road.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, yeah. Those parking problems.
Well, both, I mean, also, and maybe touch on ADA, presumably, some of those improvements will increase access as well.
Yeah, so we're working on the internal pathways through the site relative to drop off so that we don't have people crossing through areas that they shouldn't be crossing through. Right now, they use cones, so we're putting in some, some gates and things that we can provide more permanent obstruction so people can't do those things. But as far as the parking off-site Bergen Road, the neighbors have expressed some concern for the amount of cars parking in the neighborhood during events. So the district has agreed to look at policy 707, which is facilities use, and put language in that, per Mark's request from the township, put some language in that that it asks that they use the onsite school district parking and not street parking and off-site parking. So they are doing everything they can to put language in their facilities use for outside user groups so that if somebody does park where they shouldn't be parking, it can maybe be enforced at that point by the township.
What I was thinking when I read this, is there any legal enforcement or is it just a policy to alert people that they shouldn't park on that street?
I can't speak to the ability for the township to enforce it, but I can say that the district's trying to let all the outside users know that if they're going to use the facility, they should be parking on the school property.
Their legal spots.
Refrain from parking in the neighborhood.
There's really not a whole lot we could do to say no, but as a condition of approval, you can ask the school district, you know, to consider revoking the permits for any of those outside users if it becomes a problem.
Right. The same restriction we put in would affect the homeowners still.
Because you can't. Yeah, you don't want to put, you know, a two-hour parking limit or a permit parking only or.
Okay, great. Thanks, Doug.
Great. Next, Skyline Drive. Recalling back in July, we opened bids for some retrofit of the Skyline Drive Homer's Association Detention Basin. Pete and I were talking just as the meeting was beginning about this 1970s vintage detention basin up off the skyline that we see as a good candidate as our next project after Integrity Drive to meet some of our water quality improvement obligations from DEP and through the Wissa Hickin Creek Watershed Association. That would be a worthwhile endeavor. That single bid came back rather high, much higher than we had budgeted. And in speaking with the low bidding contractor, we came to learn that he made some assumptions that were maybe not exactly correct. He was nervous about the amount of work that he understood the project to entail, and it is much higher than we had budgeted. But in conversation, we have, have some understanding of some credits and some reductions in those costs based upon a site meeting and a conversation about the scope of the project. Such that we are able to reduce that total price from $165,000 to about $121,000. I think we budgeted like $110,000. Yeah, and the ARPA funds for the project, so we are indeed much closer. Again, this is a contractor that's very well-known to us, Plymark Construction. They've done a lot of work with us. They built the playground at Cisco, the walking trail at, that, oh, and Walnut did the work over at Mermaid last summer. So I think we're very confident that we can indeed work with this contractor to make sure that the prices stay closer to what is budgeted as opposed to what that bid may have shown.
So are you asking us to approve the bid price, the 164, with the expectation that we might be able to cut out some?
That is correct. I think that because that's a bid we received, I think that's the bid we've got to act on. But with the knowledge that we are going to receive savings over the scope of the project, getting us down to that 121 number. Jim, legal input, please.
I was just wondering, I mean, would Plymar be willing to have us bind them at the higher number?
You mean at the lower number?
Well, no, I mean, we're going to accept a bid of 164. That means they accept a bid of 164.
Yeah, and so, or performance bonds at 164?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, yes.
Okay, so they're going to be, what, they just trust good old Tim Woodruff to, to interpret things in a way that will permit?
Pay based upon the actual quantities that they complete. And so when Tim reviews that, he's only going to pay based upon those unit costs they're actually performing. So as a result, it'll be the change order that'll deduct that 164 down to the 120.
Jim, I have a revised bid form that I would suggest that once we execute a contract, that the next step would be a change order to reduce the value of the contract.
Yeah, that would make sense.
That's what I, that's what I'm kind of envisioning happening.
Okay, and then I'll go to the next obvious question, which is, does your interpretation or clarification give Plymar any kind of an unfair advantage over people who perhaps chose not to bid based on the same interpretation?
I don't believe it did, or it will.
Well, it would be the opposite. It's not like we're increasing their compensation.
Right, but if they, if they're, if the bid documents could have been interpreted by someone the way Plymar interpreted it and they decided not to bid, and now Plymar's been assured that that's not what was involved, that this was involved or something different was involved. And do we have somebody now standing up out of the wilderness saying, oh, I would bid on the project if I'd known that?
So there was a mandatory pre-bid meeting of which two contractors attended, one of which was Plymar, one of which was
Eagle Contracting, you know, another.
That elected not to submit a bid. We think they elected not to submit a bid because they submitted a bid for another project and their bid was far higher than Plymar's. Well, if their numbers are going to be higher, I think they just said, look, here's the competition, I'm not going to touch their number.
Would it be prudent just to provide Eagle the clarification? Say?
Hmm, good question.
Well, I mean, that's exactly where I was at.
Here's the updated information. They can still say if not, or they can do, but at least now there's the two bidders, the two people that showed up. At least for the same thing.
Well, except that I think he'd open it up to the whole world, you know, which is okay. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that, but I'm just saying.
I would open it up to the whole world. I mean, because only two people should. Right, I would only open it up to the people that should.
Well, that, I mean, that's going to be a legal issue as opposed to a what makes me feel good or you feel good. We just don't want a situation where somebody says, oh, if I'd known that, I would have bid, or I would have bid less, or whatever. I mean, if.
Well, Jim, I think everybody, we had this, the same pre-construction meeting where I provided the same information to both contractors. Both contractors certainly had the ability to choose to bid on the project the way it was described.
Okay.
And, you know, if they chose not to bid, I feel less confident if Eagle had bid and had, you know, lost by a couple of bucks or something, that, I think, would be more concerning to me that we'd have to share that information with.
Okay, they didn't bid at all?
They didn't bid at all.
Okay.
They said, you know, we were traveling from Westchester, wherever they're coming from, and this is, you know, too small a project to make it worth our time to mobilize our forces to drive that far to deal with a rather small scope.
Then my legal opinion is that the, the risk of someone coming out of the woodwork is probably not very great.
Great. Sounds good to me.
So then I guess we'll ask the board to award that contract on Wednesday night. I'll issue a change order for the lower value and we should all cover.
Will you be able to see the change order anytime?
Yes. I agree with many times, but. Yeah, so, and that, this was the original bid at 164, and then they lowered some of the, like, some quantities, uh, near by some case of time.
And Tim, those quantities were not in the bid document?
They were.
They were. So we are reducing the quantities in the bid document?
The bond stayed the same, the unit pricing was reduced. He said, oh, I see better now. I don't think I need to charge, you know, 75 bucks a cubic yard. I can charge 45 bucks a cubic yard for that same stuff.
Okay.
Is Plymar doing integrity out of it?
They are.
And, and what's there, and they're ready to go, or are they?
Yeah, they started, yeah, yeah. Pete, they did all the clearing. We provided stakeout for the new outlet structure. That bit of rain kind of slowed them up a little bit. They don't, they didn't want to necessarily get in there when it was going to be that wet. But I expect this week to be back in there to start that excavation and how it's structured.
But the greater picture that you raised in your memo about, you know, these jobs being too big for the small guys and too small for the big guys. I mean, you work in a number of other municipalities. I mean, is there any, how are others approaching situations like this when we only have one contractor bidding on these things that we, is it, what's the solution here?
I'm not sure that we can force contractors to bid, you know, we can, we make it available. You know, Carol has sent those advertisements to a number of contractors in the area who we have worked with in the past. And people maybe were busy, people, you know, decided that's not really the work I want to do. What, I don't know what the reason would be, other than, you know, this didn't, this project in particular didn't gain a lot of, a lot of interest from the community.
I honestly think that there are contractors, regardless of who they are, are so busy right now with work.
Right, yes.
They don't want to go through the aggravation of having to put bonds in, it's in, pre-bid meetings, you know.
All the prevailing wage rates and all that kind of stuff that comes along.
Because they're, once they get used to that prevailing wage, they don't want to work for the lower rate, but they're on a great job. So a lot of them steer clear of that.
Yeah, but to Peter's point, I'm sure a lot of the townships have similar sized projects, right?
Right, yes, yes, yes.
The Puyallawiers, there's got to be some people doing them.
Jim, I have, it's almost the exact same project up in Lower Moreland for one of their older basins. And there's a company from Southampton who had completed that work, Appcon Construction. I sent these bid documents to Appcon. In fact, Appcon was the contractor who did the paving work down at Bisher. So they're familiar to us, you mean, they've worked in town before, but they chose not, not to bid, so I don't know why.
Well, I don't, you know, I'm not looking to make a problem out of a, of a good thing, you know, if they're doing good work and giving us good prices, that's, that's good. We're doing the right thing and always making it sure it's open and, exactly, being checked by the market.
Well, on your other projects, you have multiple bidders on Integrity. You've had multiple bidders on Bisher.
Walnut, you know.
Walnut Avenue Trail was a lot of bidders. There was like six or seven on that one.
And who won that?
Plymar.
Plymar, yeah.
Tim, would it matter if we utilized a different online bidding process?
I think that's worse.
Worse.
Yeah, when we use that, when you use that Penn bid process, it's another, you know, bidding platform that is available to us. But that goes out.
Out of the world.
This is not a world kind of project, you know, but you get guys calling from, you know, Connecticut and Chicago, like, hey, I'm looking at that project. And you're like, you're coming from Chicago, really?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, a few years ago, we had that project down Carlisle Road
Yes.
in Cisco Park after Ida, that we had some federal grant funding for. We had to bid it twice before we got somebody. And the person that we ended up getting was from like Poconos area.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we've got the reach. It's just a matter of who's busy and how sharp is their pencil.
Exactly.
Let me ask another general question. Are there kind of scales that are baked in when we bid, when projects fear each other? Or is it required that they get bid for that project all by itself, not, not counting, I'm just curious?
Suze, these projects are all standalone, unique projects with a specific set of bid specifications and, you know, bid forms and obligations with regard to bonding. But there are contractors who maybe have an advantage due to the mobilization cost. If I'm moving from Glenside versus moving from the Poconos, then my mobilization costs can be much lower, which sometimes gives a local contractor a bit of an edge. I don't think it's an advantage if it happened to be, you know, close to home with the project. And so I think they're able then to save some on those kind of costs.
The question is more, if you have project A and project B and they're within a quarter mile of each other, a mile or whatever the distance is, do they bake that price right in any savings or mobilizing efforts if they're already in? They just bake that in to, let's say, project B because they're already here with project A, just for future planning?
They could, right, if we, if we had a couple of projects, you know, kind of bidding, you know, simultaneously or shortly one after the other, and a contractor saw an opportunity to do both, they could certainly look at that way.
I'm doing your neighbor's.
Make a roof in your neighborhood.
It makes sense for us to plan out all of our detention bases in year A or in year one, if that's going to get us better bids. Just, I don't, I have no idea, throwing it out there, savings, mobilization savings. Be nice if they have that.
Great, guys.
Good day, Tim.
That's all I've got for this evening.
Good, Tim.
They were just.
Any, uh, headway on the mill?
Oh, yes. So, survey is scheduled actually for the end of this week. So we need to get out there, get that work underway, get a plan together, and, you know, see what that results in as we start to talk.
Everybody says?
Yeah.
Cool, thanks, Tim.
Have a great night, guys. Hopefully it's not too late.
Thanks, Tim.
I know everyone's name in the room. Jane, do you have any particular agenda items? Okay, Chris, do you have any particular things on the agenda? Good, okay. All right, let's jump into our very skinny book this month. Thank you, thank you, Mike. Okay, item A is fireworks display application for North Hills Country Club. This is, uh, happened pretty much annually, kind of rinse and repeat, if we want to consider that waiver and allow them to do fireworks on Sunday, September 1st. The appropriate insurances and whatnot.
Yep, they already submitted the insurances. It'll work with Chuck Bailey and the Oral Fire Company to set up a safety zone and emergency plan if anything should go awry, hopefully it doesn't. They've been doing this 30 years or more. So, kind of marks the end of the season, and they have a reindeer of Monday.
They started using any drones where you can like make the shapes?
Not aware, but that's coming.
All right, so no objections there from anyone?
The township announces this, doesn't it?
We do usually put something out on the website just so that people with young kids and dogs can plan ahead.
Ferrets, ferrets are very effective.
The good thing about this one is it's going on for so long, everybody kind of respects it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right, great. Tab B, we already covered. Tab C.
Question. Last month, I saw, John, you had already got the middle school improvements, but I don't recall.
It was Peter.
I joined, I joined Peter.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't know if there was a different reason and just because of how middle school improvement, it was period. It was the same reason as his, or?
Yeah, no, I was just, I was sort of supporting Peter in his, made sense.
All right, Mike, is this the earliest in the book the manager's report has been?
No, so it's interesting you say that. There was a period of time where the president of the board, who always has his portfolio first, was always internal affairs or administrative affairs, as we call it now.
They could be.
And the manager's report was always the first item. And even when that flipped a few years ago, the members of the board that were there at the time were so used to the manager's report being tab A that they said, to hell with the fact that, you know, it's not the administrative affair, put that at the beginning because we will start with that.
Okay.
It's not officially, but for this board it is.
All right, cool. All right, so why don't you go ahead and take us through it?
Very quick. Just a note about the 2025 budget and the meetings that you'll have. You have one coming up in September, on September 18th, with the three fire companies, the ambulance provider and the planners. You have a budget workshop meeting on October 16th. Both of those dates are Wednesdays, they're both at 7 o'clock. The budget presentation will be on November 13th, and then the budget hearing and adoption is scheduled for December 11th. The last two meetings are part of your regular business meetings in November and December. Bethland Plague, just a short update on where they are. Latest three-week schedule that I got from them. They'll have work continuing through the end of the month. When I did this report, it was before we had the weather on Wednesday or Thursday and Friday of last week, so they're a little bit behind. But they had some additional paint work, sign work, and more important is the signal work to get it done. Highway projects, under the township's purview, we have our annual highway resurfacing program started the last Monday with milling activities. They got two streets done and the milling machine broke down. And then we had some weather last week, but they resumed today. They hope to start paving next month. And then we had some weather last week, but they resumed today. They hope to start paving, uh, next Monday, the nineteenth. Um, a- and then that'll probably be done that within a week, weather dependent. And then, um, our annual action repair program, we rented a milling machine and a roller as we always do. And we mill out the bad spots and the potholes and, um, try and keep the roads in good condition and good, uh, spot repairs. Uh, Ian mentioned something about that in his formal report as well.
When did you, did you mention a timeline for, they're doing three oh nine, right?
Three oh nine is starting tonight, so the milling machine over on Paper Mill Road by the school, it's scheduled to start tonight. And there, and that's on the, under the next tab as well. Um, just to finish up ours, we have our, um, intersection line painting, um, the signalized intersections, we outsource that. Because it can get kind of funky and, um, there's a lot of activity, so they do that at night, so that's been completed. Uh, we didn't have to do Bethland Pike this year because it's getting done on the state's nickel. Um, and then our in-house crews will be doing the neighborhood streets. We start at the schools and then we kind of work our way out. Uh, the long line, which are the median lines and the, uh, shoulders, uh, they're outsourced and that'll get done after the. Resurfacing program is completed. Um, state highway projects, I mentioned in here, Valley Green Road, they started milling that last night, that was delayed by about a week. Um, they're out there paving right now, I think. Um, three oh nine is going to start tonight, um, the milling machine's out there right now. And, uh, that work will stretch from Lock Ash Avenue up in Upper Dublin, all the way through Whitmarsh and then end at Paul's Lane. Uh, it will include the church road, uh, interchanges. Uh, West Nile Virus.
And they're going to do on, on off ramps too.
On and off ramps at Church Road within our town, they're not doing Paper Mill Road because the, the scope stops at Paul's Lane.
Oh, really?
The church, the church one's really bad. Church one's really bad.
The church ones are bad.
Yeah, I know that.
But then these are pretty good sheet. If you remember when they rebuilt it, they rebuilt it in phases, and this was one of the earliest phases that got done, that's why it's in need of resurfacing. Uh, West Nile Virus, we did have a positive mosquito sample, um, that was taken in the creek behind Marlow Field. Um, the county has a regular trap setup down there that they have been collecting samples for years. Um, it's tested positive in the past, not every year, but it has in the past, and they come out and they treat it, uh, which they did, uh, on the following day. And I was talking to a couple of members of the board, uh, before the meeting started and, um. On Friday, I got noticed that they did it in like three different towns because it were positive samples, so there's, it, it's all over.
But will they retest?
Yeah, they, they continue to, to come out and test throughout the summer.
But just at this location or other locations?
No, they have other locations throughout the town that they can sample as well, but this is the only one that came up hot. Last month, I talked to you about the historical society and their interest to set up a display in the library. Um, do you remember the old township building, we had the, the storyboards for the Stokesbury Estate, um, along the hallways? Um, they would like to do something similar in the library, and they wanted you to do the, uh, feature, the, the, uh. The greatest states of the Gilded Age, many of which are still around fortunately. Um, but then their thought is they would have these things professionally, uh, mounted, uh, with hangers that you could dislodge. And take them down and then hang new ones up every couple of years, and then recycle these throughout. Um, she seems to have, know what she's talking about, and, um, they have grant funding for it, and they're not really asking for anything from us other than the space to do it. Um, so it sounds like it's a pretty neat project for them and.
What, what's happened to the Stokesbury pictures?
We actually have them in the rec center garage, and we offered to have her come up and take a look at them, they need to be refurbished. Um, because they're pretty beat up, uh, but, you know, we, we didn't want to get rid of them, because we thought they were pretty cool. And she may try and get them redone with wholesome strings. Um, Carson Valley School, um, I had a conversation with Erin Smalley, she's the campus director. Uh, for Carson Valley Children's Aid, and she confirmed, uh, what we had heard through the school district. That the residential and educational programs, uh, at the Flower Town Campus will be winding down at the end of August. She actually confirmed that all the educational residential care, um. Uh, residential treatment programs, uh, have already concluded, and they're not doing any of that right now. They do, um, wish to continue to operate out of the Pines Building, uh, which is the former executive director's home. They've made some conversions there with building permits and everything, um, to accommodate adolescents that get pulled from the home. Um, for various reasons, the parents are either incarcerated or like can't care for them, um, well. Any number of reasons, um, and those stays would, would range from as few as one night to as many as three nights. In the case of a Friday night placement, they, they don't get somebody placed permanently until Monday. Um, so, you know, with that in mind, it's an awfully big campus. And for them to do just that activity there, so, uh, I kind of begged the question, like, are you guys still maintaining the property? Do you have the need arrangements to maintain the little cottages that are there, cut the grass, all those things, and she assured me that they have. Um, so, I don't know what more I can, assurances I can get from her. Uh, but then simultaneously, I got a call from Rick Collier, who's, uh, thirty-plus year volunteer member of the Carson Valley. Board of Directors, and, um. He asked if, um, he could arrange a meeting with staff, um, because they would like to put some additional parking at the schoolhouse property. Which they will continue to own on West Wasickin Avenue, it's the former Flower Town Schoolhouse that they have run a daycare center out of for many years. And I said, we, we can certainly accommodate that meeting, but I really like to get a meeting together between the trust. The school and the township, so we can all kind of get together and understand what's going to happen at the facility going forward. And he agreed to try and get that meeting together, so.
We still have a confirmation of a, of a date or, uh, potential dates?
No, and I haven't scheduled the date for our parking lot meeting either.
So children's aid, uh, has some kind of lease with the, uh. No, yeah, they're, they're less a tenant, right?
Are they more related than owner-tenant? Or are they purely a third-party operator like the other company?
This is my understanding that they're, uh, basically a third-party operator.
Okay, but then they, were they exclusively at this property?
So the Carson Valley Board of Directors are the ones that, um. Found PHMC to operate the school, because I think they were having a hard time going it on their own. And, and that's where they played in. Um, so there, but there's still a Carson Valley Board of Directors. And there's also the trust.
Right, but the children, the Carson Valley Children's Aid, are they more closely aligned to the trust? Or were they purely a third-party operator as well?
So, I guess the only way, I don't know how intimate they are. Uh, I do know that the one trustee is a former member of the Board of Directors. So there's obviously some closer relationship there than. Than a, a, a totally external organization that they found from somewhere to bring in.
And that other operator had nothing to do with this, that the program is current, this short-term stay. Uh, that's, that's still happening.
That's going to be PHMC.
So they're still.
They're still operating, they still have the lease, they're still, they have the obligations to care for the property and maintain it as well.
And Mike, in the past, um, my kids have had sports events there. Were those leases done with Carson Valley, with the, with the township, or were those private?
I think they were done through the trust.
Through the trust.
Them and the township?
That's, that's the Chestnut Hill Fathers Club, I think. Use sports club now, yeah. Use sports club.
Could we, could we strike an agreement with them to use some of their fields during this interim period? You know, just like in soccer time, we're always kind of. Scrambling for space and field.
Yeah, they, I mean, I think the Chestnut Hill group built all those fields, and I'm not sure what.
Yeah, but I think the, the last night I heard, like, the agreement is like kind of coming up, like over the twenty-four, twenty-five. And, uh, you know, I think third.
Doesn't it have to be approved by the court if there's a trust?
Uh, I'm not sure how I got that because it went all the way back, but, you know, two thousand eight or something.
That's the complicated fact about the, the use of this property is there's a very long, very unbelievably detailed. Uh, trust agreement that says how Mr. Carson wanted to see the property.
It's very interesting reading.
It is interesting reading. And I think the deviations from what is deemed to be his wishes for the property. Have to be approved by the Orphans Court in Norriston.
Uh, maybe since it's like nonprofit children's sports.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sure that.
Or an accessory use, they're not using the buildings, they're just using the. But it's worth asking and. How much they're using it still, and if it does, if it is sitting unused, you know, is there any opportunity to?
Um, I mean, the way it, like, when the pandemic hit, and then when, kind of how that property was being used, like. You know, the, the, you know, the, the, um. You know, how at risk the children were that they were bringing through there, um, it actually, they started limiting the access more and more. So like, Chestnut Hill would have loved to have used it a lot more than they were. You know, like, everybody had a park, like, out on Beckland Pike, and then walk in, there were cars in there, and, you know, like. It was very limited access.
We had a pandemic? I remember that.
Seventy-four acres.
Feel like it was a lot of time.
So, 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 so there are no kids there anymore?
Other than the temporary.
Guess they're temporary, yeah, that's it, so all the building you're emptying.
Except for the administration building along the pipe and the pine building, which is like closer to Wasickin Avenue. So, John, I'll, I'll ask, I'll beg the question, um, but Brendan, what you had mentioned, that's pretty consistent with what I had heard at one time. That, um, they didn't want anybody on campus during the pandemic, because they didn't want to risk the kids getting sick, uh, or the staff. Um, and we had received some complaints around that time, uh, that people were parking on Wasickin Avenue. And that was one of the conditions of approval for those fields that, um, they not utilize Wasickin Avenue for parking, for those event, for safety reasons. And then, of course, the neighbors.
I mean, pre-pandemic, they would want people to park inside, like, out on the, like, unmoed. Fields and stuff.
Even that tree grove.
Yeah, and then, uh, that, that all, then they just didn't want to add there after.
M- Michael, how's that piece zoned?
Residential, double A residential, with the triple A overlap. But it, that was, that zoning went into place after the Carson College for Orphan Girls was created.
But now that no longer exists, so that non-conforming use no longer exists.
That would be my interpretation as well.
There was a pre-existing non-conforming use when the property was zoned residential with the overlay. So because it was legal and pre-existing, it trumped the zoning. Um, but it has now stopped being used for that purpose, so it no longer trumps the zone.
Is there, are they?
Correct, or somebody could ask for something different.
So it couldn't be reopened as a school, is what you're saying?
It, well, unfortunately, that's, that's the most complicated question in zoning law, because you have to prove intent. If they, um, if they, uh, attempt to use it for some other purpose, then. The non-conforming use is abandoned, but if they continue to try to reopen it as a school, it'll never be abandoned.
Right. Right, okay, well, I would just, I would push for setting up that meeting as soon as we can. I know August is, is tough, but. Sooner than later would be great.
Uh, thank God, uh, the sampling that you approved last month was completed on the thirty-first of August. Um, like, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, July, and, um, we have the results back. And they're good. The benzene in MW six has dropped even further, uh, to twenty-two point seven parts per million. Uh, versus the twenty-nine point nine, uh, back in March, which was really low. Um, so our, our next, and, and there was no, you know, movement and, and no evidence found in either of the two down gradient wells. So, um, we're going to revise our report and resubmit, um, with responses for, um, both the soil and the water, groundwater. And hope that we get through EEP.
And then next month, are we going to vote to test again?
Let's hope not.
Can we post those results?
Yeah, yeah, have the, the data. Not going to mean much to anybody, but.
We've done it in the past on the project page, right?
How do we get, we would just, we would disseminate that directly to the, the concerned neighbors?
If they wanted it, if they asked for it.
That'd be big one.
Um, also draw your attention, we have an RFP out on the street to select a planner consultant. Uh, to lead the master planning process for that property, and. We made direct na- direct mail notice to seventeen different firms, uh, in addition to advertising it. And then we have a pre-proposal meeting for them to come and see the site and ask up questions on, uh, the twenty-second. Uh, they're due on the thirteenth of September. Uh, the rec center, you have bi-weekly project meetings are being held with the architects, uh, most recent one was last Wednesday. Uh, they're currently trying to plan or schedule three public meetings to educate the public about the project and obtain additional feedback. So, um, the current thought is we're going to have a virtual meeting sometime during the week of September sixteenth to introduce the project to people. And then that'll be followed up by an in-person, open house-like meeting at the rec center during, uh, the week of October thirteenth. Won't be the sixteenth because you've got a budget meeting. Um, then we have a follow-up meeting planned for the week of November eighteenth. Uh, Emily and Jessica from NKSD are trying to work on that. Actual dates for that, and then there's a, a property matter that you might want to talk about in exactly the back of, uh, your meeting. Parking Rec Advisory Committee, remember that last month, Perry Pacella, well, actually it was two months ago now, she stepped down. Uh, from her position on the advisory board, uh, so we have a vacancy, uh, right now, and for one member. Um, last month, you reviewed the resumes and cover letters of three residents and you, uh, invited them to attend your September meeting. So that we could, uh, meet with them and interview with them. During the month, I got a fourth resume and, and cover letter, and I talked to Jim. Jim said, the more the merrier, uh, bringing the individual in, you can do them all in September. National Night Out was rained out last Tuesday. Um, so we're going to do it through the another world tomorrow, the weather should be much better. Six to nine PM tomorrow here. Big hot dog, ice cream.
Will you be doing the? Are you doing the ice cream all night?
I'm ice cream, unless I get put on the grill, because it's worse than that, retired. Be a hot dog guy, so, uh, what'll happen then? I'm telling you, that, that's in-demand.
You doing the ladder rides?
I mean, they were here fueling up tonight. I'm guessing that they are.
I went pretty high.
Did you go in?
I did, I looked up and I got a little woozy.
Does it rock a lot?
I didn't go up.
Uh, entry-level police officer, we are testing with the Montgomery County Consortium for an entry-level police officer. Um, the test is going to be administered September seventh, right across the street at Springfield High School. Um, it'll be followed by physical agility test, online registration, uh, and applications are being accepted through August twenty-eighth. At twelve PM, we have messages all over the place, including the three oh nine billboard, front lawn out here, the website. And if you'd like to make an announcement, we can certainly do that, uh, at your meeting.
And we, we're fully staffed.
We are, we do not have a vacancy right now.
Do we have any expected retirements?
Uh, civil service hearing, so, um, we had an individual that was disqualified from our hiring process. Uh, because, uh, they were less than truthful in their employment application. Uh, I go into some detail about some of the, the things that we discovered through the background examination and and talking with other municipalities with the individual had applied with. Um, well, under first place township code, um, they're entitled to a civil service hearing to kind of plead their case in front of the Civil Service Commission. So we've made preparations for that, it's scheduled for Monday, August twenty-sixth. Um, I give it a fifty-fifty chance of actually happening. He's got a habit of canceling about an hour before his polygraph examinations and uh, any of the interviews that he's had with some of the other municipalities, so we'll see what happens.
You're still on that, right, Beth?
Um, give you a, just a reminder that, um, the Third Circuit has scheduled the uh, oral arguments for the, uh, in blue line flag uh, litigation for September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, we don't have a time, I think it's kind of like a rolling agenda as it comes up. Uh, but our defense counsel is going to prepare, uh, the arguments for us.
You, you included links in that email, is that, is that live streamed? You can watch that live?
I think they're, I think they're videos, I don't know that it's live streamed, that, Jim, you know?
Uh, I think you're right, I think it's videos you can see whenever you want, but it's not live.
Okay.
It's on.
So it's like available the next day or something like that?
Yeah, everything that I saw seemed to be dated.
Okay.
Happened independently.
And that's in the federal courthouse downtown, the green.
The green.
Uh, and then recreation staffing, I mentioned last month, uh, that Nancy Ashton, um, is going to retire for ten years as our part-time recreation coordinator. And no surprise, um, Emily, um, would like to make the pitch for a full-time position. Um, and I was a little surprised she, she wants the, the position to be more, um, facilities focused, um, more along the lines of caring for the park facilities. Um, putting work orders together, doing the inspections, whether they're safety inspections, just routine inspections of the parks to see if there's a broken gate or, um, anything of that nature. Um, and then she would handle more of the administrative functions that Nancy handled and the interactions with the parents and things of that nature. Uh, there's obviously a cost associated with that. Uh, because right now, you know, we're dealing with a, a part-time individual and if you were to go to a full-time uh, position, you probably come close to twice the, the cost, plus you have the benefits to pay. Uh, but, you know, we've added a number of park facilities over the years. Um, you know, between Bolgenetti Park, Chiramonte Park, Sandy Run Park.
About to be hosed lane.
About to be holding lane park. Uh, you have a rec center, you know, whether it's massive improvements to it. Uh, or a whole new facility, you know, there's, there's going to be that consideration as well. So, um, she's, Emily's not pushing for an answer right away, but we wanted to try and see that subject up with the board. Uh, because Nancy's last day will be at the end of the month, and we'll get that process started.
And evolve it.
And evolve it.
And I know one thing that it was helpful for me in the past was, um, give you a sense of what surrounding townships, parks and rec departments look like. And I know that it's not exactly like comparing apples to apples, because say Upper Duplin has a lot more programs, but they also have pretty robust staff.
Yep.
Maybe if we can, I don't know, if there's a way to get a sense of
Sure.
What departments look like in other townships?
Yep, we absolutely can do that.
I think we did that maybe last year, not that long ago. I remember seeing. Yes, I'm.
Uh, I don't know if it was last year, um, time flies, uh, but I think we did do something similar. Uh, and, and we're like, and, and we recognize that, we, we always have that.
But, you know, it's, it's always huge to get the right person too, so I'm, I'm cool with getting started early, right, so you're not in a position later where, you know, you're scrambling, um. I'd be looking at.
All right, well, I'll, I'll get the data on me, but cops, you know, where everyone else is and where we're, because we're going to want to have that anyway for for salary ranges and things of that nature.
Yeah, the, the program board meeting, we take the ladies of some sort of, you know, the board. Retro roles and, and so admin taking roles. Forgotten and maybe fine for forthcoming, you have center, what happens if they require admin as well, so maybe the plan for a full-time player, her wishes for a full-time now. And maybe what they're, what's the part we put in one year, two year, I don't think they really Might be good to have a, a, a strategy for two or three years.
Yeah, and have that conversation continually with our architects and the programming side of it. You know, however that shakes out, and if there's X amount of revenue coming in from that, but there's got to be a person at the desk or here or there. You know, that, that's a consideration.
And I say that only because at Carson Rec Committee, often we, uh, we touch on in the previous, the current and previous members have touched on, well, the administrative work is just so overwhelming for Emily, we have this conversation, definitely you remember the data before. Uh, and why did we get the, uh, offloading some of that work through the public works was I just, it was so long down in admin and I can't get out to whatever, not that. And I just wanted to be thoughtful and just raise the issue that, that we cited that afterward and don't want to reload it, I think, and his role. Even that was something discussed.
Can I make a minor park, uh, comment, since we're on the topic?
Sure.
Uh, I just noticed when I walked in Cisco a few weeks ago. Like, you know, there's like certain trees that are dedicated, you know, from a long time ago. And I know there's varying ages of those plaques, but I did notice a couple that were like physically missing a corner. So like the date wasn't on, like it's one thing to be old and, but to actually like carve out part of the name or the date, that might be something that be worth replacing.
Good to see how nice the playground.
Uh, well, this was like three weeks ago, it wasn't fully done, but it was, was nice.
It is.
And where I saw those signs, Mike, was, um, across the creek. A little walkway that runs parallel to the creek. Go outside?
Yeah, yeah.
Any update on scheduling a, a review of cutting this area?
No, we have, um, the benches that we ordered for the pavilion are missing some parts. So we can't complete their assembly and put them down there yet. Uh, and she's trying to schedule with Rotary to do a, a joint ribbon cutting, grain reopening down there, and we, um, Wymar finished up the paving, they had some paintwork to do. The, the weather wasn't cooperative last week and for the eighty-eight parking spaces. And we were putting up the enclosure around the restroom. For John last week, so. There were those, like little odds and ends that were trying to get done, and Craig's working on a sign to acknowledge the grants from B C N R and county.
The bucks.
Yeah. Think we got the one piece that's done and done.
Okay, good. Tim and I, before the meeting, were talking about the, the pathway that leads down from Montgomery Avenue to the bridge. That had been, you know, bit there before, which is not there now, and, and, you know, what's going to what, you know, what's going to take place there or?
So we're going to, um, include in the two thousand twenty-five budget to reestablish that bit. We had to take it out because, first of all, it was falling apart.
Oh, yeah, it was a mess.
And then they recreated that area
Right.
As part of this project, they need to go at that point as well. So, um, the playground work was well over budget because of the cost of the equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, you know, rather than add that as an additional.
But it is a valuable passageway and walkway for anybody who uses that, the fields, and, and I'm sure who are going to use the, the playground. In addition to the kids going to the high, to the school, they're, to get the, get the bus and stuff, so it's, it's going to be missed. I mean, is there any way we can, you know, some dollars to try and reestablish something, because what's there now is just dirt.
Yeah. Well, I mean, in the winter, we don't do any maintenance to it, we don't, we don't file, we don't shovel it or anything, and the kids walk through the snow. Which, what they'll do now.
Right.
They'll just walk across the grass. Um, it, it, from what we have observed, it's mostly Philmont that uses it.
Yeah.
Because they have their kid, their schools pick up on Montgomery Avenue.
Right, but that entrance way there too is to the other soccer fields or the, uh, baseball field there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, everybody uses that, some portion of that. And, and along with the neighborhood to get down to the bridge, they go across to the side of it. So, I mean, I, I really, I would strongly recommend we do something there because we've always had, uh, had a public path there and now we don't.
It's just mine.
I know, I know. Let's dig deep, guys. Find another, find another five thousand bucks.
Oh.
If you got a problem, throw money at it. If you don't have any money, you got a problem. All right, that's an excellent manager's report, Michael.
It's too long.
Thank you. All right, Tab D, any questions on the bill listing?
Who, who is, uh, this, the, a law, a, a bill for two thousand seventy-nine bucks legal expenses for uh, D Z Mahoney and?
That's your, uh, in blue line five.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yep.
I got a couple. Mike, just real quick, on page six of fifteen. Um, some of the names, like the, the kindergarten transition camp.
Through the instructor.
And that's, uh, oh, that's payment for the instructors? Okay, so that's not fees passing through?
No, no, they're the instructor.
Okay. Um, Penn Turf Company, do they, is that seeding work?
So they do the athletic fields, they'll do, um, weed treatment, they'll do fertilization, and they'll do re- aerating over seeding on the athletic field.
Great, um, eleven of fifteen, so I think you mentioned this the other day, uh, or the other.
Athletic fields, like, you know, not just regular pasture areas.
Okay. Um, you had mentioned that, um, new cans were coming in, new recyclable cans and lids. Um, so can you remind what, what's the cost to a, a resident who wants to come in and buy a new can?
Twenty-five bucks.
Twenty-five and how much for the lid?
That includes the lid.
Okay, twenty-five bucks for the can and a lid.
And we lose money on it.
We do.
Not much, a little.
Yep, okay.
But they yellow.
But it's a good thing to remind people.
Still yellow.
There's a lot of people will fill up their yellow cans more than they do their trash cans these days, so.
It's my neighborhood.
If somebody wants to buy an extra.
That's my neighborhood.
There you go, okay.
I have two yellows. That's, that's not enough sometimes.
I have two yellows as well, one has a hole in the bottom.
Right.
Too much information.
Making so much money on the recycle, you know? Well, credit you get for that cardboard, you're making a killing over there.
When we look at the check.
That, that savings could go to the airport, I think.
Now, my question, the check, is that, um, for the last month's bill listing?
Correct.
Check rig, so you should, okay. Uh, I think that's all I got. Anyone else on bill listing?
Uh, there is, uh, you know, there's still a bill for the rec center hall, it seems pretty high. The Pico bill, and I don't, I don't believe that bill, I don't believe that bill is air-conditioned.
Uh, yeah, the, it is, and, and that, um, so it's been some.
Library or the?
The library, though, the former library, though.
Got it.
And it's very inefficient.
Okay. But necessary to give blood.
Yeah.
All right, great, we're on to, uh, Tab E, uh, zoning board. Um, we did receive the resignation from Megan McDonough after twenty-two years on the zoning board uh, that she had to leave, uh, due to a new position that she took. And we have an alternate, James Brown, who's a current alternate member. Um, you, did someone already check in with him that he was willing to become a full member?
I, nobody has, we wanted to run it past you folks first, but he's great, I mean, he, he's eager to jump in whenever he gets an opportunity because of an absence of somebody or, you know, space to recuse themselves, he's always prepared, always ready to go.
Great, great. How long has he been on?
Two thousand nineteen, I believe.
Does he feel good?
Is it too hot in the hot tub?
Curious.
I, I think I just, uh, offered the call and find out.
John, do you want to call, or do you want one of us to do?
I can call.
Okay.
I think he'll be excited.
All right, great, so we can vote on that as early as Wednesday, correct? Okay.
And then you'll make an announcement that you've got a vacancy.
That you have a, another vacancy. Because.
Right, we'll have an alternate.
I have special qualifications for, uh, the traditional way to put on those relating.
So.
Common sense.
Oh, yeah, common sense is good, um, in the past, we've.
That's going to whittle down the candidate pool.
We've had, um, previous, well, we have a current zoning officer on there, Jennifer. Um, we've had retired zoning officers, Rick Simmons. We've had a lot of attorneys on there. Uh, I think Vici Boom, I don't know if anybody was on the tour when she was on, I think she was a school teacher, retired school teacher. Uh, so, I mean, you can, you know, uh, realtors, you could probably have a realtor on there, if I understand. A contractor could be on there even, so.
Anyway.
So you can be, so we don't advertise specific background. Well, you can certainly take that into account when people ask.
Commitment, it's an annual.
Once a month.
Once a month, uh, like, you, you know, you sound for a term.
Oh.
No, it's, um, uh, three years.
Three.
Yeah, I mean, at the times I've been there, I just want to acknowledge that the level of, again, the experience all was seen directly related to Jennifer, uh, before, and of course, with, um, uh, Megan's background, it was always, I guess those backgrounds are highly valued, although any of them sort of. I just want to acknowledge all everyone's backgrounds and efforts at zoning.
Yeah, great. Um, so they, they meet August twenty-sixth, is that, I guess, just the one case, John, that's on there?
Yep.
Um, any comments on that? Pretty simple?
As Kate says, it's the garden variety residential variance request.
There you go. All right, any questions on the recycling report?
Doing a great job.
Yeah.
Okay. Tab H, solar photovoltaic feasibility study, and basically, uh, we were given a copy of the report from the structural engineer that that did the analysis, it confirmed that these buildings that we're considering are all sound, can handle the load. Um, so really, our next step is to discuss um, the type of firm that we want to seek out, and I think you wanted to have Mr. Garrity chime in on uh, a design build scenario, if there's any legal ramifications of that.
Two things here, so, um, you recall that I had reached out to Dewey um, to get a proposal for them to do the feasibility study and uh, to put bid specifications together for us for a traditional, you know, bid project. Uh, their numbers were much higher than I expected.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the EAC, through their contacts with Ron Salentano, were able to really bring that cost down significantly. So we, we paid Ron a thousand dollars to do the, the feasibility study and run the numbers, and give us the payback and all that. Um, and then we, we paid this, uh, structural engineer about two thousand dollars um, to do, evaluate the roofs and make sure, you know, that everything can be held up there. So, you know, if we, if we could do this design build scenario, Ron thinks you'll get the latest technology, um, and it would be more cost efficient. The question is, in the municipal world, um, can we do that with all of our bidding obligations? Uh, prevailing wage obligation, and all the other things that, you know, come into play. Maybe something for Jim to think about, um.
Is there a dollar amount that triggers?
Twenty-five thousand triggers the, um, prevailing wages, but anything over the eighteen thousand change. It goes up every year a little bit, anything over eighteen thousand, we have to swallow it.
And we must accept the lowest responsible bidder, that's the problem, sometimes we don't want to.
So the problem with design build is you hire the firm, but you don't know the, the construction costs, because it's a, it's a target as they design um, that, so I, I mean, I have to imagine there's design build projects going on, public projects.
Yeah, but, uh, I took design build in this context to mean the firm that designed it would build it. That's what it means, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, I think, I, I, I think you could do the design without bidding. Um, because you could say that's a professional cons- professional services.
Even if that scope is more than twenty-five thousand, or more than the eighteen.
You take a little bit of a risk on, um, the construction, because there might be lots and lots of firms who could do it. And it wouldn't be considered professional, but you could try to consider it professional and.
So, so how's that work with a design build firm, so they, they design it and you pay up to that scope of work, but now you've got specifications to go at the bid, and they're bidding on their own project being designed, but they could conceivably not win the bid. Or, yeah, how does that work? Because usually a design build, you're, you're hiring them
Right.
With some specification in place, but how do you bid it if you've already? Because usually a design build, you're, you're hiring them with some specification in place, but how do you bid it if you've already hired them?
I think, I think Ron, I guess, if, if in preference, if he could have it go this way, would be for us to engage a solar provider to design and install, supply and install.
Correct. That's my understanding.
In which case, we would still need some kind of an owner's rep, make sure we're getting what, you know.
Right.
We pay for, which could be wrong. Alternatively, if we think that the bid, we have to go out and bid, Ron can probably work with one of the solar firms on a set of specifications that we could use to put out to bid, to select a contractor, supply and install.
So would that not then be design build?
Would be a design build at that point, you're basically hiring Ron to fill the role of an engineer to come up with your specs.
Right, okay. That makes sense.
And as an alternative, we, uh, which is not discussed here, we could, we could also decide that the way we want to do it is just not get involved with it. Put it out to somebody, to a third party, saying, you can use our roof, and we're gonna get, we're gonna get certain benefits from you using our roof, but we're not buying anything.
Yeah, it's a different model, it's a lease model.
Yeah, 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 but I, I mean, I, I, I don't, uh, I mean, have we had enough discussion to absolutely dismiss that concept?
I remember we did talk about it, and I think Ron, in his analysis, came back with that there was the benefit more of buying, but I don't think we should just not talk about that again, but like, now that we're getting into the weeds a little bit.
Right.
Yeah, we should definitely make sure that that's not a better option, sure.
I think he talked about that early on when we first met with him, and Joey was here. Um, and, and I think you're right, I think he did talk about o- owning it, had it, that more benefits for us in terms of.
Well, I'm sure, yeah, but it also has more risks, and it has some, uh, uh, you know, infinitely more dollars, uh, on the tech, being shelled out on the table, you know. And, uh, my limited experience ha- has shown that for municipalities and, you know, fire companies and other people with roofs, you know, it's, it seems as if they've always employed somebody else to do it. And, but that was before the change in the tax law that allowed us groups to get the thirty percent tax credits and things like that.
I think that made a big difference, because the.
I'm sure it did.
The lessor receives that benefit and.
Yes.
If we lease versus us, so that, I think that scales with.
But it's, but it's, it's still a model that you could, you know, I mean, if, I, I think we have to link a goals here, you know, what is our goal? Is our goal just to save money on electricity? Or is our goal to, you know, uh, lessen our carbon footprint and?
Yeah, well, they go hand in hand. We're generating electricity, you're.
Yeah, 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 well, but my big concern can, continues to be the viability of these things, I mean, I just, I, I just, I don't hear anybody bragging about their solar system. You know, like, I just don't, you know.
Well, you're not hanging out at the break bar.
I guess not.
Because I have.
I guess not, yeah. I just don't, uh, I don't hear a whole lot of people bragging.
I wonder if it's one of those things that once you put it up in that first year, you realize the cost savings, and then after that, it's just absorbed because you're not seeing it any longer.
Well, you see it, you see it every month or every year, yeah.
No, but you get used to that same bill being small like that.
Yeah.
Like, you know, like, if your bill right now is a hundred bucks a month.
Seen bills last year.
You're only gonna recognize it, it's crazy if you drop significantly or go up a lot.
I, I, I would be more comfortable if we just had some more data about the, the reality of the savings, because.
Yeah.
Uh, because you, you really hear these horror stories about, I mean, like this, this, this group in, in New Jersey, this church that, that put it up, put, you know, put these police panels up and everything else, and they, they were told they're gonna save thousands and thousands of bucks, but, but, but nobody, nobody realized that, you know, when they, when they needed the, the power, it was at the cheapest possible rate, and, and, and they didn't have the ability to sell it back at the highest possible rate.
No.
And all, all, all of a sudden, the, 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 uh, chart, it looked like this, you know, was going, was going like this, you know, it's just, it's, it's a big, and it's a big financial commitment for the township too, you know.
I think, I'm sorry, that's, yeah, as the guy who puts together the budget, kind of, you know, runs the township, does it make you nervous considering this level of project at the same time the rec center, or, or not really?
Oh, absolutely, I mean, and any kind of cost of this number of this.
I mean, these are like two major projects that we're considering at the same time.
Three, go tank car.
Yeah.
Come on.
Yeah.
Tank cars tomorrow.
Yep.
Potentially. So you're, you're talking about, I mean. Talking about, you know, thirty, forty million bucks here.
We have some grant funding for tank car, that may not be enough, but you have yeah, fair amount of grant fund for that, but.
And then some grant funding for this, potentially.
Potentially. Now, you have a neighbor that kind of like dabbles in what Pete's talking about.
Yeah.
Um, where they come in and they provide the equipment, set it up, they maintain it, and they, I guess they own it for the first however many years, and then you share in the savings, I guess, or, I'm not sure exactly how that works. Not that far along.
But you, you put another party in there who wants to skim a little money. Um, and that, that has to be evaluated against the risk.
Right, right. Yeah, the big upside there is you don't, you're not paying a big net upfront.
Yeah, you don't have the initial capital outlay, you don't have the, um, the maintenance requirements, you know, we've heard that these will go bad after ten years, you don't have that.
Yeah, and the tariffs are all gonna change, and the utility companies are all gonna, you know, they're not gonna go down on a fight, so.
Yeah.
But, but are you, if, if someone else owns the system, are you saving that much money?
Not as much.
Not as much, no, no, no.
For sure.
Maybe, maybe you're shaving a couple cents off your kilowatt, you know, hourly charge.
Yeah.
Well, that was the, the thing that Ron got into a little bit, like, you're still gonna see transmission charge, I guess.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
You're still gonna have a customer charge.
Yeah, you're, you're only talking about savings of half your bill, for, for lack of a better, you know.
Less than half, because you've got your gas component, and then you've got the multiple layers of the electric that you're not.
Yeah, 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 and.
I think Ron can advise us on a lot of this stuff, I know. We had a, we had a, the one Zoom call with the one township that, that put them in. Uh, was it, was it West Goshen or, or something with a B or an R, whatever it was?
No, it was one up in Bucks County, it was either East or West Rock.
Rock Hill, but that was like a good story, right, there was like, if you're looking at success stories and they were happy.
Yeah, I would love to see their success, I would love to hear about their success.
We had a Zoom call with their, was it their township manager?
No, it was an ex, uh, supervisor.
Okay, but he was involved with it, doing it.
Yes, for that, yeah, yeah. He was the advocate for it while he was on the board, and then.
Right.
He had, his term ran, or he stepped down.
So, but I think he, Ron can help with some of the success stories and, and, and checking that due diligence, um. And he can also reiterate, or, you know, go over the lease versus buy pros and cons.
Because we can become compliant, you know, from a, you know, environmental carbon capture uh, aspect by, you know, by, by buying stuff on the commercial market that's, yeah, generated by wind or other, other, quote unquote, operations.
Well, that, that was also a good, you know, interesting question.
Yeah. You're just transferring costs, you're not really.
Yeah.
You're not affecting the footprint at that point.
Questionable if that's what's happening.
Greenwashing, greenwashing?
I wouldn't say it's greenwashing, it's just, just whether you can actually trace down the savings. Function. I think to your point, uh, maybe Ron provided, and maybe we asked this before, but it was much larger presentation, uh, a binder of a whole positive case studies of municipalities or other institutional facilities of similar size, I know, I remember him mentioning, um, partnerships for example, and just what, whatever more, you know, commercial story, the success stories, providing, find that up, that I would be, that following comes forward.
Mm-hmm.
And of those who may need to hear at the pod.
Yeah.
The review is which.
Find that right bar.
Um, I, I think we, in terms of what's in here, and the question that's asked in here, I think we might benefit from talking to Ron, because, uh, I'd be very, very concerned in this type of application to be required to take the low bidder.
Right, because you don't want junk.
You don't, you don't know how much experience they have, you know, I'd rather have Ron tell us, you know, this is really a professional services type of thing, and you need.
Develop those specs.
You need really good recommendations and, you know, really good people doing it, and so we don't have to take the low bid. Now, somebody out there who is a fly-by-night operation may want to challenge us on that, but I think it's, I, I mean, I think it's worth the risk.
End up with paper mache panel.
Yeah, or you'll end up with, with somebody, it's his first big project, you know.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't anybody just build the lowest?
I'm sorry?
I mean, you have to find a job, of course, but why would people just build the lowest?
Well, you have to be responsible too, it's the lowest responsible bidder, and um, bidders are always, like, if you disqualify them and say you're not responsible, then they immediately sue you. Um, so you have to be, uh, discreet and careful and not overuse it.
Right. All right, well, I'll talk to Ron and see if he can.
Okay.
Some more handled.
Does Plymark do solar com?
Not yet.
Not yet, but.
Okay.
All right, all right, very good, very good. Um, I would like to reiterate though, when we, when he came for that presentation, and we went through it, like, I remember at the end, everything about it was financial and efficiency, like, we got to the end, like, we didn't even talk about the environmental impact, that was like the ancillary benefit to it, like, so that was just gravy. Okay. Uh, all right, EAC Commission, uh, we have an alternate, uh, member, uh, vacancy, and there was some talk of having a student representative.
Yeah, I think, I think they're gonna talk about it this month, um, we got an email that I shared with Brendan. It was Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, it was, it was discussed at the last meeting, but I think, you know, they, they want to add a student, but I think it was tough to add a student at this point in the summer, um, but, you know, perhaps with the next meeting. Uh, I think they have a couple kids who already, they know, have some interest, and kids who would be very earnest, so. Eventually, I think we'll have an outstanding candidate who will, you know, really contribute.
Okay, great. All right, so we have nothing to do on that.
Nope.
Uh, it's the next meeting, okay, uh, Tab J, skyline, we already covered. Oh, man, good job, Mike, nice skinny book. Uh, we do have
I have one other thing.
At least one executive, but go ahead.
Uh, so I got a note from the Pennsylvania Municipal League and the State Association of Township Commissioners. They'd like you to designate a legislative liaison that could respond to their calls for action um, as they come up, or principally like votes by the legislature. So, for example, um, when the radar bill comes up again, as it inevitably will, um, they're gonna do a call to action, and they're gonna want us to contact our state rep and our state senator and say, yeah, we're all for it. Um, and they've want us to designate somebody that can speak for behalf of the board to do that. Um, you know, I would certainly consult, if you wanted to be me, with the rest of you before I respond, but if you wanted to designate somebody, um, among the board, happy to delegate that as well.
I was not doing it. But I don't want, you know.
No, you can certainly do it, I'll put your name on this thing, if you, you guys would formally appoint them on, um, Wednesday, and then I'll fill out the information, give them your contact information, and you'll get that email when it comes out.
You didn't read the other pages, all the other things that go along with it, Ted, yet? He already, he already said yes.
All their requirements.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't mind.
All right, great.
All right.
There's, what's the organization?
Uh, Pennsylvania State Association of Township Commissioners and the Pennsylvania Municipal League.
I get all the, I, I get the supervisors one, I get the, the boroughs one.
But you don't get the.
No, I do get the commissioner.
Oh, you do.
I do get that shot. Are they, do they, do they, uh, work together?
Yeah, that, so the municipal league is the, the parent organization, and then the PSATs and PSATC and the boroughs are all kind of underneath, and they use PML to support.
Okay.
How many games are in the season?
I don't know. For, for the.
More than, more than two.
Seventeen, about to be twenty.
Eighty-two plus playoffs.
New commissioners benefit, I, I had attended at least two little trainings, uh, they had to do, so if you're interested, if you have training available. You have to be proud of everybody. It's out.
Hmm. I think some of the impersonal ones, they're always like, uh, Loserin County or something.
Yeah, it's kind of odd.
Falls right around the corner, beautiful out there. Nice drive, trees are changing.
Do you have other items, Mike?
That's it.
Anyone else have any items?
Oh, Jane, were you planning on speaking, Jan?
Sure.
Jane Thomas, Orland. Um, I've been asked to invite you all that if anybody would like to do a ride-along at with Ambler Ambulance, you are welcome to do so, and just holler and we'll set it up.
Wow.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
And in front of the truck, not in the back of the truck.
By the end of the night, we'll be in the back. Jane, do you want them to get back?
So like a safe ride?
Or to Jan?
If you want.
Okay, all right.
You have Ann as well.
Yeah, and I think I have your email. From, from an email or two.
Anyone else have any items?
Mike, um, we planning to prove the subdivision for that property on Sunnybrook a couple months ago?
They did the subdivision, but the land development is pending.
And do you know where it is?
The land development?
Yeah.
Uh, well, we, they need to go to planning next Tuesday.
So the schedule of good planning?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we do that next Tuesday.
In the interim, the property has sort of like gone to.
High grass weed.
High grass weed seed.
All right.
Because it's one of those where you want to expedite with that permission or expecting expedience or agree on their.
So I think it's, it's, um, under agreement, and I think the current landowner has kind of like washed his hands of it, because he's making that the new owner is responsible for everything, but that new owner hasn't closed on it yet and isn't doing anything. So I think it's in that, like, window layer.
Window layer is what I, but anyways, go ahead and, uh, through to an extension, letting other few, um, planning approvals of that's a good, awkward removal.
Yeah, somebody still has the obligation to maintain the property though, so.
Which, and this is pretty bad, because it's like the existing house is like.
Oh, the house looks terrible.
Blue tarp on the roof, and it just. Yeah, nice, so the property can just be tightened up. And, um, I was traveling that week, um, of that tragic car crash on Stanton. Any, anything, was that just a, a tragic accident, or was it sort of in line with like the speeding, the sort of.
Stolen car, red light.
Vehicle out of Philly, um, blew a red light, uh, on Evergreen, and a vehicle heading north on Stanton, he boned it.
Well.
Five, in the morning or?
It was totally preventable, um, yeah, it was like, five, five o'clock in the morning.
And young kids that were.
Yeah, one.
Fifteen, yeah.
So we believe that the female was eighteen, uh, there was a fifteen and a fourteen-year-old male, so.
And just one passed and the others recovered?
One passed, one's critical, and, uh, the, the the female was actually out of the car when they got there.
She was driving?
Don't know that yet, but, uh, that's the issue completely.
Okay.
How's our drone doing?
We have one.
Good. Oh, good, we'll get a demo tomorrow?
Yeah.
Let's do it tomorrow night. And we have two or three pilots.
Hmm. They can determine who has bald spots or not?
Actually.
My daughter said. My daughter said.
Whether the roof can have solar on it or not, yeah.
Does it have a heat sensor?
I believe it does.
Yeah, remember the, was it the, the Boston Marathon bombing, when the guy was hiding in like a boat in the backyard covered, and they saw his heat, you know, and were able to locate him?
That was like when it first came out.
Yeah.
You're all like, whoa, no way.
It's like, yeah, you can't hide anymore. Any other items? All right, great, we're going to go into executive folks, so the public portion of the meeting will end at this time.
Good night.
Gray page of E, good night.
Thank you.
Anyone left online? One person, okay, we're going to executives, so thank you for being here this evening.
Yeah, good.